Regular council meeting to order. It's July 23rd, 2018. The time is 7:35. Can we begin with the roll call?
Mayor Potemps.
I'm here.
Councilman Corbett.
Here.
Councilman Geddings.
Here.
Councilor Graffstein.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Solis.
Here.
Mayor Hurd.
I'm here. Would you please rise if you're able for an invocation to be led by Councilwoman Scott and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together here tonight. Send down upon those who hold office in this city the spirit of wisdom, charity, truth, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their office to promote the well-being of all people. We ask this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Welcome to Madison Heights. We have a big agenda tonight, and can I ask, are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? All right, hearing none, we can begin. We have two presentations this evening. The first one is the 2018 Police Department Bike Rodeo Raffle Winners. Ms. Marsh, do you have any comments?
Yes, just a few. Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union donated funds to purchase bicycles for the raffle winners from the 2018 Police Department Bicycle Rodeo, and Chief Haynes is here tonight to present the bicycles to the winners.
Good evening, Chief Haynes. Thank you for joining us tonight. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight is our night to award the two bicycles to the winners from the bicycle rodeo. As you're all aware, the bicycle rodeo was on June 9th of this year, and we have to thank Mr. Hades, who's the branch manager of Schools and Government Credit Union here in the city. They have been a very valued partner over the years and for the last several years have provided the funding to purchase the bicycles. So, our first award bike goes to Maxwell Porter. If I could have him and his family step up. And if I could have our second winner come up, it's Amy Yakub and her family.
Thank you, Chief Haynes, and congratulations to the two winners. The next presentation tonight is the return of the 2018 Summer Beautification Awards. Ms. Marsh, do you have any opening comments?
I'm going to defer to Joe Vitale, who has a presentation and is going to make the awards.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. As councils are aware, the fiscal year 2017-18 adopted goal plan realized the return of the Summer Beautification and Holiday Light Award programs. This city goal focuses on giving recognition of and an incentive for city pride, which includes an emphasis on landscaping and home improvements during the spring and summer months and spreading holiday cheer during the holiday season. Even though this program has been on a hiatus since 2009, the Active Adult Center Advisory Board picked up right where we left off. First, I'd like to give out some thank yous, first and foremost, to city council for the return of this city goal. From my personal opinion, this has been very well received in the community thus far, so it's nice to have it back. The Active Adult Center Advisory Board, still getting used to saying that, would the former and present members please raise your hands? Thank you for being here tonight. Jennifer Cowan, I'd like to recognize her as the city's Active Adult Center Coordinator. She does a wonderful job over there, her staff, and some staff for DPS with their hard work with this as well. Our winners, Savah and Ann Cato of 30749 Blairmore, who are with us tonight, would you please stand and raise your hands? James and Mary Brown of 30728 Blairmore, who are also with us tonight. Thank you. And our third co-winner was Laura Koznick, who could not, who unfortunately could not be with us tonight. I will say, we went out and looked at these homes, and what was unique about these homes is you're typically looking at the front yards, which are absolutely beautiful, but with all three homes, which you'll see in the PowerPoint, the backyards are just as magnificent, so. And last but not least, all of the other residents that weren't winners tonight, we
the roses this summer. Mr. Vitale Jr., thank you for guiding us through this presentation.
You're welcome, Your Honor. certainly enjoyed your presentations in landscaping as well.
Would Mr. and Mrs. Cato please rise and accept this certificate from me, if you're
Thank you, Mr. Vitale Jr.
still here? Mr. and Mrs. Brown, would you also please rise and accept this certificate from us?
Thank you very much. There, we can continue. There are no public hearings tonight, so we go to meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity for any member of the public to address city council on any issue on their mind. It's not an opportunity for debate, so don't expect me to rebut or answer all of your points. It's your opportunity to speak. It's your opportunity to take the microphone and address your concerns. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. Three minutes or less is our recommendation, and although it's not required, it would be helpful if you give your name, address, and any affiliation you have, maybe to another governmental entity, or a business, or just a neighborhood association. And so with that, I invite any members of the public to come to the microphone now and speak on any subject. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. My name is Mark Holcomb, 628 West Brockton, and I want to talk about this Monroe Park, these houses being built. From what I understand, according to the newspaper, the city was interested in buying this property. And I want to know why they didn't. And if it was done illegally, why isn't our city attorney filing a motion to stop us? Now, from what I understand, they're not zoned houses, they're zoned apartments or condos. And according to Mr. Buddy Meyer, or Mar, he said that there are going to be $180,000, $190,000 homes, and I talked to another board member that used to be on the board, he said $130,000. So there's too many stories here, and we're not getting the right answers. Mr. Mar also said that they didn't offer to the city because you guys screwed them over on property before, so they weren't going to deal with you. So they're putting their personal feelings above the school and the children. So I'd like some answers.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments, very much. Would anyone else like to address city council? Any subject, any subject is open. Oh, good evening, sir. Please step right up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to be real brief.
Thank you.
Yes. Anyway, I'm going to basically just leave some materials, actually just two, concerning the issue of abortion. And coming up in the Roman Catholic Church in October is Respect Life Month, and it's a yearly commemoration related to life beginning at conception until natural death. And in the Orthodox and evangelical churches, the month of January is Sanctity of Life Month, and observed for the same purposes. So I was just hoping that during especially those couple of months, that the council wouldn't take up Planned Parenthood, is encouraging municipalities to celebrate Women's Health Month, reproductive freedom, all these other, you know, more sanitized terms for abortion. But the church takes abortion very seriously as a moral issue. I'm going to give you, I don't know how many of you are lawyers by training, I know of at least one, but I got an amicus brief that the Orthodox Church gave to the Supreme Court in 1989, when Roe versus Wade was readdressed. Okay, I'm going to, and we have it in pamphlet form, so it's actually very easy to understand, and it's in our track rack, and actually one of the more, you know, people are very much interested in this issue. So I'm going to leave that with you, and the Sanctity of Life Sunday Prayer. And I don't expect you to have a proclamation for the Sanctity of Life Month or Respect Life, but just hope that maybe on this issue, since I'm sure there are a lot of people in Madison Heights I know personally are strongly pro-life, and maybe take a pass on this issue. Can I?
Yes, Mr. Stevens, please approach. I'll accept your materials. Thank you for your comments tonight.
I invite anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening. Randy Speck, Superintendent of Madison District Public Schools, and Mr. Mayor, City Clerk, interim city manager and the city council. I'm here tonight in a much different spirit and tone and mood than I was a few weeks ago when I came, and we're in the process of preparing for the school year, the next 2018-19 school year, both Madison Elementary and Wilkinson Middle School. They start two weeks from tomorrow. Both of them are on the balanced school calendar. We've had a lot of success with that balanced school calendar. This year, we're moving the middle school up to that schedule, and we're looking forward to seeing how that works for our students. But I am here, and I'm glad Mr. Holcomb already kind of reintroduced this into tonight's meeting, because I am here this evening because I wanted to get something on the record and really set the record straight regarding the development that is happening on the old Monroe Elementary site. The Madison Park News has run a couple of stories over the past few months, talking about the school's method in selling the property, as well as the residents' desire to keep that an open space. Both councilmember Corbett and former councilmember Clark are quoted in the articles as wishing the school district would have given the city the opportunity to purchase the land. However, on April 1st of 2009, the Madison Park News ran a story about the city's initiation with the school district to develop the Monroe property. In October of 2008, the city, city council fully approved it. Mr. Geddings was on the school board at the time. Many of you are here. The city council approved the Community Development Block Grant as part of the Neighborhood Stabilization Program of 2008. In November of 2008, former city manager John Austin sent a memo to then-superintendent Dr. Paul Rogers, saying, "Hey, we need to work together." The city's going to get $1.2 million, and a cornerstone of that grant could be the redevelopment of the Monroe site, which meant the city was going to purchase an acre of property. The city was going to put a playground and a playscape on that property. It was going to demolish the Monroe School Building. And again, a part of that grant was that then the school district, at the appropriate time, and again, 2008, 2009, it was about stabilizing neighborhoods. The school district would then sell the property and build single-family homes. April 1st, 2009, the Madison Park News. The Community Development Block Grant was a part of this Neighborhood Stabilization Program, and $1.2 million was a lot of money, still is a lot of money, and 40% of that grant was to develop the Monroe site. I understand that, and you as a city council, will understand this as well, not everyone agrees with the decisions that you make, but my purpose in being here tonight is to remind the city council, and many of you who have quoted against the Monroe property, 10 years ago were very supportive of the development of that property, so much so that in part in 2009 and 2010, the city goals, the very first part of Under Quality of Life, was the full implementation of the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, which part of that, again, 40% of that, was the development of the Monroe site. We would ask, as a school district, and again, some of this is school district matters, but in business, but involves the city. The city initiated this program in 2008, 2009, and we agree with it. As a school district, we agree with it, because building homes is a good thing, especially right now. So we would ask, as a school district, that you continue, because you unanimously did this 10 years ago, we would ask that you continue to unanimously support the development of new homes and new programs in the Madison School District, as always, sustaining invitation for any of you to come visit with us, visit with me. Let me share with you what we're doing in the school district. Come talk to us about the things that are happening, so you can literally hear from us as to what's happening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, welcome.
901 East Lincoln. I don't know that that says specifically that we're going to develop the property at Monroe, and I would say, while the neighbors there obviously want green space, I think that the process in which that property is sold is a bigger problem. Going to the school board president's front, unbid, three acres, just over, for $60,000, is a battle cry and a warning sign for a lot of people in this outfit, not just the people that are living around that property. So, development, everybody can have their argument one way or the other. Do they want to see homes? You've got to do it legally, you've got to do it above board. This is schoolchildren's money that potentially was given away for the school board president's friend, who we found out after the fact. A small group of us brought it out, it wasn't even told till after. So understand the whole process. Absolutely, Mr. Speck is right, people don't always agree with what's going on, but the process and the legal process especially needs to be followed. People shouldn't feel cheated, and with the Heffman property, there was enough people that spoke up that that property didn't get developed. I'm sure you guys remember that. And I think maybe that's why it was so quiet, that's my guess, that the Edison property, or the Monroe property, excuse me, got sold so quietly. I don't think they wanted the people to show up again. Now, that's my understanding. I just want to make it clear. It's not always about the process, people aren't necessarily going to want homes there. My understanding is, and maybe they can tell you, that Randy Speck had promised to have a town hall meeting. That never happened. So, yeah, people are upset, and they're angry, and they're concerned, and just so that the whole picture is brought out, I just felt, you know, we're painting the picture with lines, we need to color in all the details. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Alexandra Marram on the Madison District School Board, also living in the district. She just stood on a soapbox. You guys hear what Mr. Speck said? That deal was etched in stone with the city. City brought it to us. We agreed to it. We had to agree to it. I'd love to talk to you guys personally after a meeting. We'll get this straight. That was just a soapbox. I'm not going to come up here and say, I'm just going to, we inherited that. I wasn't on the board then. They made a deal, you were on the city council. You voted for that transaction.
Mr. Marr, talk to me.
Right. Ms. Holder was on the council at the time. She voted for that transaction to happen. And you just heard what she said about transparency? She sold a building for a dollar. There were a lot of things that happened. But I'll talk to you guys later, I don't want to sit up here. We'll talk about this.
Thank you. The meeting is still open to the public. This is any subject. Would anyone else like to use a meeting open to the public? No one else has asked to be recognized. Last chance. All right, we'll close this portion of the meeting. Thank you for your comments, ladies and gentlemen. There are no communications or reports, or are there items for future public hearings? However, we do have several bid awards and purchases tonight, and the first is item F1 from the police chief regarding the replacement of police department vehicles. Ms. Marsh, do you have a report?
Council has requested to approve the purchase of one 2018 GMC Terrain and one 2018 Dodge Durango SXT in the unit pricing of $26,582 and $27,614 respectively, through the Oakland County Cooperative Purchasing Contract. Funds are budgeted and available through the Federal Drug Forfeiture Fund Program.
Thanks. What's the wish of city council?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I move that the council approve the purchase of a GMC Terrain, a 2018 Terrain, and a 2018 Dodge Durango SXT, unit pricing $26,582 and $27,614 respectively, cooperation with the Oakland County Cooperative Purchasing Contract. The purchase will be made through Todd Weisel Buick GMC and Galinas Van Dyke Dodge. The funds are budgeted and available through the Drug Forfeiture Funds.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Geddings.
I second the motion.
Thank you, sir. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Geddings, to approve the purchase of a 2018 GMC Terrain for $26,582 and a 2018 Dodge Durango SXT for $27,614 through the Oakland County Cooperative Purchasing Contracts with Ted Wenzel Buick GMC and Galinas Van Dyke Dodge. Is there any discussion on this item? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next purchase for our consideration tonight is from the DPS director, and it's for a front-end loader, the replacement. Ms. Marsh?
The approved fiscal year 2019 budget includes the scheduled replacement of a 2003 Caterpillar loader with a fixed four-yard bucket funded through the water and sewer division. This loader is heavily utilized year-round, hauling materials at the DPS yard, including road salt in the winter. At 15 years of age and an extremely poor evaluation score, replacement of this machine is essential to support routine DPS operations. The loader is suffering frequent breakdowns resulting in significant downtime and high maintenance cost. Distributors of the four most widely-used regional brands, Caterpillar, John Deere, Case, and Volvo, were contacted and they delivered machines to our staff for evaluation. In each instance, staff met with the representative, and all of the loaders were left at the DPS yard for over a week to allow for evaluation, which included hands-on operation in the field for side-by-side comparisons. It was the consensus of the group that the Volvo L110H was the best for the four machines in all areas evaluated. Staff and I request that council approve the purchase of one Volvo L110H front-end loader from Alta Equipment in New Hudson, Michigan, through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract, for a total equipped cost of $251,691. Funds are budgeted and available for this replacement.
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Scott.
I move for council to approve the purchase of one Volvo L110H front-end loader from Alta Equipment of New Hudson, Michigan, through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract, for a total equipped cost of $251,691.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Graffstein?
Second.
Thank you. Motion was made by councilmember Scott, seconded by councilor Graffstein, to approve the purchase of a Volvo L110H for $251,691, the front-end loader from Alta Equipment in New Hudson, through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract. Is there any discussion on this item?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
If I can ask a quick question?
Please.
The old one took, lasted 15 years, and it said with the technology, it should last longer. How, is there an estimated time, time of life expectancy?
Thank you. I'd invite Mr. Vitale Jr. to address your concern.
Good evening, mayor and council. We usually put these in the replacement schedule at about 15 or 20 years, councilman. Depending on how it's used, and this is a workhorse, I mean, during the construction season, during the winter season, this thing's working all day, every day, so I would put it in the 15- to 20-year replacement schedule.
Right. Thank you.
Other comments from city council? Let's vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next purchase this evening is a request from the DPS director for a four-ton pavement patching hot box. Mrs. Marsh, your report?
The fiscal year 2019 budget has funding through the Streets Division for a pavement patching hot box, a tow behind apparatus designed to keep patching materials hot and therefore more useful and pliable. In preparation for this purchase, DPS staff evaluated several of these machines from various vendors and were very pleased with the simplicity of operation and the improved quality of the finished product. During the demonstration process, it was discovered that the two-ton hot box originally quoted during the budget process would not be sufficient for our needs, lacking a lift dump body for load shifting and cleaning, and a tool holder for carrying shovels. Staff determined that the four-ton unit offered through the Mydell Purchasing Cooperative would be an excellent fit, providing many years of reliable service and improving our pavement maintenance operations. However, this model does exceed the current budget amount. Staff and I recommend that council adopt by two separate motions. The first is to award the purchase of one four-ton pavement patching hot box to Falcon Asphalt Repair Equipment through the Mydell Cooperative bid, for a total purchase price of $23,119.87. I'd invite Mr. Vitale Jr. to address your concern.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We usually put these in the replacement schedule at about 15 or 20 years, Councilman. Depending on how it's used, and this is a workhorse, I mean, during the construction season, during the winter season, this thing's working all day, every day. So, I would put it in the 15- to 20-year replacement schedule.
Right. Thank you.
Other comments from city council? Let's vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next purchase this evening is a request from the DPS director for a four-ton pavement patching hot box. Mrs. Marsh, your report?
The fiscal year 2019 budget has funding through the Streets Division for a pavement patching hot box, a tow behind apparatus designed to keep patching materials hot and therefore more useful and pliable. In preparation for this purchase, DPS staff evaluated several of these machines from various vendors and were very pleased with the simplicity of operation and the improved quality of the finished product. During the demonstration process, it was discovered that the two-ton hot box originally quoted during the budget process would not be sufficient for our needs, lacking a lift dump body for load shifting and cleaning and a tool holder for carrying shovels. Staff determined that the four-ton unit offered through the MyDeal purchasing cooperative would be an excellent fit, providing many years of reliable service and improving our pavement maintenance operations. However, this model does exceed the current budget amount. Staff and I recommend that council adopt by two separate motions. The first is to award the purchase of one four-ton pavement patching hot box to Falcon Asphalt Repair Equipment through the MyDeal Cooperative Bid for a total purchase price of $23,119.87. The second motion would be to appropriate additional funds needed of $5,620 to account
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gettings, do you have a motion for the first item?
Not jumping the gun. Make a motion to award the purchase of one four-ton pavement patching hot box to Falcon Asphalt Repair Equipment through the MyDeal Cooperative Bid. Would you like me to read the number or no?
Just the price, please.
Okay. Price being $23,119.87.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Support?
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Motion was made by Councilmember Gettings, seconded by Councilmember Corbett, to approve the purchase of a four-ton pavement patching hot box to Falcon Asphalt Repair Equipment through the MyDeal Cooperative Bid for a total purchase of $23,119.87. Is there discussion on this first item?
Ms. Marsh?
Mr. Corbett?
Well, I was going to answer, sorry. But, Your Honor, just a question, Ms. Marsh, regarding the allocation of the $5,000, I lost it here, some six, is that being transferred because there was not sufficient funds in the first account or what's the reason for that?
It isn't being transferred. We're asking council for an additional appropriation because we originally did not budget enough money. When we came to council for the budget, we were looking at a two-ton and we now, after the evaluation process, realized we really need a four-ton and that's $5,620 more. So, it would be a new appropriation. It's not being transferred from somewhere else.
Do you think we could drag Mr. Vitale Jr. back to the microphone for a second to justify that second, or the third and fourth ton?
Good evening again. When we go through the budget process, specifically the capital improvement plan, we try to price these things where we think the equipment's going to come in if approved. In this case, we did demo a two-ton unit. It didn't have all the bells and whistles that we're certainly requesting, but with the four-ton, obviously, we can stay out on the road longer. It holds more material. That would be less trips to the badge plant or back to the yard to get new material, as well as the lifting assembly on this unit. And if you can imagine workers trying to reach into this unit as opposed to it raising and lowering, which we certainly see the safety benefit of that, we just underbudgeted on this piece of equipment. It's one that DPS has been trying for, for a number of years. Seventeen-five was the original number that we had, but when we finally got to the point of purchasing this, got approved, the number was higher than we anticipated. It was just a screw-up on our part.
Your honor?
Mr. Bliss?
It does seem that the scope changed, so I don't necessarily want to just say that it was a, you know, a budget. I mean, this went from a two to a four. But I will, I will agree and, you know, I guess concur with the fact that this will reduce some of the costs related to both staffing as well as potential for workers' comp and medical and things that might be related to back pain with bending down. So, I could see the value of the additional $5,600. I definitely don't want to shortchange the fact, though, that the original context in the budget was the two-ton and this is going up to the four. There are benefits to that. I think we should be discussing those. But in the budget process, we were discussing a two-ton for $17,500 and this is a four-ton for an additional $5,600, which, in my opinion, is okay, but it just went us at the appropriate context.
That's correct. And there are some things noted in the memo in terms of, if you can imagine, when we go pick up hot material at the badge plant, we can only put about a ton of material on that and by the time we get back to Madison Heights, get that stuff on the road, you're turning around and going to the badge plant over four times throughout the day. That is very inefficient. So, we're going to get that material one time, plus if we don't use it throughout the entire day, it can sit at the yard, you can put the timer on there where the material is being heated up overnight and you roll out the next morning. So, in terms of a major efficiency measure, we're gaining that. I mean, the cost overage is going to be taken care of rather quickly.
We haven't got to the second part where we're actually considering the additional appropriation, but of course, I'll support that. I mean, our city budget is simply a guideline to guide us through purchases throughout the year, but occasionally, our budget does not reflect reality. And so, in this case, it was wise to spend an additional $5,600. Occasionally, that happens. Also, occasionally, it happens, and especially in your department, you come under budget. So, I trust your sage advice. And I know typically throughout the year, council approves additional expenditures that were not reflected in the previous budget. And we're also delighted when you come under budget. So, thank you, Mr. Vitale, for your opinion.
Thank you.
Is other discussion from city council members? All right, this is just the first of the two motions, just to award the purchase. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Can I please have a motion regarding the additional appropriation?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that the council appropriate an additional funding of $5,619.87 to account
Thank you, sir. Is there support?
Your honor?
Yes, Mr. Bliss?
I second.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by the mayor pro tem, Mr. Bliss, to appropriate additional funding of $5,619.87 regarding the previous purchase of the four-ton pavement patching hot box.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just one point of information on this expenditure, and that is five votes are required to pass the motion.
Your point is well taken. Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Let's vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Seven-oh. The next potential purchase tonight is a request from the DPS director. It's the Commercial Water Meter Replacement Program. It's the RFP award. Mrs. Marsh?
The adopted fiscal year 2019 budget includes 1.2 million in capital funding for the Commercial Water Meter Replacement Program. As council will recall, the purchase of the meters was approved at the last council meeting of July the 9th. At that time, staff had issued a request for proposal to solicit the installation of these water meters from the Michigan Intergovernmental Trade Network, and the city received two sealed proposals. Staff reviewed both of these proposals, of which Ferguson Waterworks Meter and Automation Group, also known as just Ferguson, was the lowest qualified bidder. As council is aware, Ferguson was the city's installation contractor for the recently completed residential water meter program. This project included about 9,500 residential meters and was completed in April, approximately one year ahead of schedule. Staff and I were very pleased with Ferguson's coordination of services, their quality of work, communication with staff and residents, their installation methods, and the general understanding of our Neptune AMR system. Although staff was very pleased with Ferguson's performance, they still performed their due diligence and called all of the references provided. Redford Township, City of Roseville, and the City of Highland Park all spoke very positively of Ferguson with no mention of any concerns. This RFP also included pricing for the scrap value of the old water meters, which shows as a credit on the bid tab, and the proper disposal of all the meter reading devices. Based on this information, staff and I recommend that the Commercial Water Meter Replacement Program be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, Ferguson Waterworks Meter and Automation Group of Madison Heights, which includes pricing for the proper disposal of all our 900 meter reading devices at a cost of $19,250 and meter installation services of $319,711 for a total project amount of $338,961. Again, funds are budgeted and available for this purchase.
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh. What's the wish of city council?
Your honor?
Yes, please.
I move that we award the RFP for Commercial Water Meter Replacement Program to the lowest responsible bidder, Ferguson Waterworks Meter and Automation Group of Madison Heights, for a total project cost of $338,961, of which that includes pricing for the disposal of meters at a cost of $19,250 and then installation cost for the new meters at $319,711.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gettings?
Second.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilmember Gettings, to award the RFP for the Commercial Water Meter Replacement Program to the lowest responsible bidder, Ferguson Waterworks Meter and Automation Group of Madison Heights, for a total project amount, estimated amount of $338,961, which is broken down for a disposal cost of $19,250 and an installation cost of $319,711. Is there any discussion on this item?
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
If I can ask you another quick question, Mr. Vitale. Here on the breakdown, it says Section 4 Optional Pricing. 4.1 is Customer Portal. Watersmart, I guess we didn't opt for that. What was that?
Your honor, council, during last year's goal process, I brought a dashboard to council as a tentative goal. As part of this program, we are upgrading all of our technology. Watersmart software is a platform that will offer dashboards, ease of use to our customers, the option to pay their bill with a smartphone, and a whole bevy of other technologies as part of our meter upgrade program. It's only mentioned in the memo and it's only priced as part of this, as a consideration for council, that I may approach you again some point to say, hey, all the meters are in, this technology is out there. We would certainly come in and do a presentation for council to get you guys comfortable with it. Our finance staff also has to take a look at it because we have BSNA's application right now for utility billing and we think that talks. So, more still to come on that. That pricing is not baked into the cost being allocated today, but maybe more to come. I want the council to see it as kind of a teaser at this point.
Follow-up question. The RTS Water Solutions didn't have a price down there. Is that?
That's not uncommon in some cost proposals. I think that this is a product of Neptune's and they would have to bid it kind of as a secondary source. They'd have to pay more for it, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other comments from city council? All right, let's vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next potential purchase is a request from the purchasing coordinator and the police chief regarding a 2018 police interceptor utility vehicle. It's the insurance replacement. Mrs. Marsh?
Recently, police vehicle 107 was damaged in an accident and has been deemed a total loss by the city's insurance carrier. A replacement vehicle is necessary and will be purchased through the Macomb County Cooperative Purchasing Program from Signature Ford in the unit cost of $31,173. Insurance coverage is approximately $20,000 for the depreciated vehicle cost. Therefore, funds will need to be appropriated in the amount of $11,200 to complete the purchase for the replacement vehicle. Staff and I recommend that council adopt two separate motions again. The first is to award the purchase of the police interceptor utility vehicle to Signature Ford for the unit cost of $31,173. The second motion would be to appropriate the additional $11,200 to purchase this vehicle.
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh. What's the wish of city council on the first matter regarding the award of the purchase?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Sir, I move that the council approve purchase of a replacement vehicle through the Macomb County Cooperative Purchasing Program from Signature Ford. Unit cost $31,173. Should I make a mention of the depreciation on insurance? No. Okay.
Thank you.
Therefore, funds will need to be appro... Well, that's a separate motion. So, that's, I'll leave it right there, Your Honor.
That's clear. Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gettings?
Second.
Thank you, sir. A motion was made by Councilmember Corbett, seconded by Councilmember Gettings, to award a purchase to Signature Ford for the insurance replacement of the 2018 police interceptor utility vehicle in the amount of $31,173 through the Macomb County Cooperative Purchasing Program. Is there any discussion on this item? I hope the officer's okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Will a member of council bring a motion regarding the appropriation of additional funds?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we appropriate an additional amount of $11,200 to be credited towards the purchase of the previously mentioned vehicle.
Did you say $11,200?
Isn't that, did I do that wrong or is it the full 31?
One. It's eleven.
Oh, $11,000.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Second.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilmember Corbett, seconded by Councilmember Scott, to approve the appropriation of additional funding in the amount of $11,200 for the purchase of the 2018 police interceptor vehicle, just previously approved.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Same point as before, five votes are necessary because the additional funds haven't been budgeted for.
Point's well taken. And I'll reiterate my point that occasionally this happens, that council members must spend additional money outside of the previously approved budget. In this case, of course, we support the staff recommendation. I support their staff recommendation. Any other discussion from council? All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. That concludes our purchases tonight. So, we have one ordinance up for review tonight. It would be ordinance number 2125. It's an amendment to the firearms ordinance, and this would be first of the two readings. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
At the request of Police Chief Haynes, the city attorney's office has provided a proposed ordinance amendment regarding firearms. Recently, it was brought to the city's attention that our firearms ordinance needed to be updated to close a potential loophole in certain language and to remove other language that is otherwise preempted by state law. The proposed amendment in Section 17-138 removes the language that exempts individuals who are duly authorized by state and federal law to carry firearms from the requirements of Article VII concerning firearms and weapons. As it's currently written, one could potentially read this to exempt anyone who holds a concealed pistol license or a CPL from the provisions of this article, meaning that anyone with a valid CPL license could claim that they are exempt from the restrictions of this article and thus they would be allowed to discharge firearms in the city. This article was written prior to the state's CPL laws and obviously, it was not intended to allow anyone with a CPL to discharge their firearm in the city. Clearly, discharging a firearm is a dangerous activity and as such, the proposed amendment limits this to only law enforcement officers in the official discharge of their duties, duly licensed shooting ranges, or in the lawful defense of a person or property as permitted by law. Sections 17140 and 17141 also contain language regarding possession of firearms that are now preempted by several state laws. Rather than delete those two sections in their entirety, they were replaced with two provisions that prohibit the negligent and reckless discharge of a firearm that are consistent with state law and other communities in our area and that are not preempted by state law. Lastly, prohibitions on shooting bow and arrows and air guns in the city that are deleted in other sections were reinserted back into the ordinance at appropriate locations.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council for this proposed amendment on first reading?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
I moved that on first reading, the council adopt revisions on ordinance number 2125 entitled the firearms ordinance amendment.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gettings?
Second.
Is there discussion from members of city council on this item?
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
I got a couple of questions for the city attorney. I don't understand why airsoft guns... Am I reading that right? They're put back in?
No, they're BB guns, Your Honor and council, that it's BB guns, not airsoft guns.
I do want...
Should we change that language?
I do want clarification on that. You know, I just did some simple legal research on air guns or pneumatic guns and there was a state law in 2005 that the governor signed specifically separating pneumatic and air guns from the definition of firearms. I'll share that with the attorney, it was Act Number 29 of 2015. If you just look up firearm act of 2015.
Thank you, Mayor.
And the state did preempt cities just a little bit, with a little bit more detail when it comes to pneumatic and air guns. They're really leaving it up to cities to decide how to regulate air guns, but there were some extra things, you know, some more time and place type restrictions that cities would need to add to their ordinance.
that cities would need to add to their ordinance. And the effect is, it wouldn't be an outright ban of air guns. There are exceptions, especially on private property. So if, Mr. Gachowski, if you could please take a look at that and maybe advise us, maybe that law has been repealed since 2015. And if you can't find it, I certainly will share it with your office and members of council.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Just briefly with regard to that section, that was just a repeat that was in there previously. We didn't really look at that as part of the amendment. It was just taken out and put back in, in an appropriate spot. So that wasn't something we really dove into for specifics, but I see your point. There is a distinction between airsoft and BB guns and pneumatic and pressure or air guns. So we'll certainly give council a full report back prior to the next reading. If you want to, wanted to consider other changes in the next reading, you could do that as well, or pass on it tonight and wait for that further information. It's your decision. We've done it both ways in the past as far as moving forward with any ordinance revisions.
Please educate us on the definition of these terms of firearm, pneumatic gun, and if air gun is separate. Because the state law defines a firearm as something with an action of an explosive, which excludes any pneumatic gun which would propel something by air.
And that's how we do define a firearm by explosive gas, explosives, but it does say gas or air, so I, yes, we will. I'll provide counsel with the report regarding--
He's right. An air gun could be a paintball gun or an airsoft pellet gun. I think that's a brand name.
And I don't think it was the intent to necessarily prohibit like airsoft guns, for instance. But we weren't looking at it from that perspective, and thank you for bringing that to our attention.
And I'm not so sure about BB guns either, should be outlawed, I don't know.
Well, it's up to council. It's obviously something that you may want to talk about tonight, whether or not you think somebody shooting a BB gun in their backyard is something that you want to allow or disallow within the city.
The state law, and I'm sorry I didn't share this, I just found this. The state law from 2015, Mr. Saltis, defines a pneumatic gun, and it includes a BB gun as long as it's projected by air or gas, you know, opposed to an explosive. And so a BB gun would fit that definition of an air gun or a pneumatic gun. And so the state legislature and the governor specifically told cities what we can and cannot say when it comes to these. And it's actually much more inclusive. You and I may agree on this, that let's not have an outright ban on pneumatic guns. I think we need to follow the state law. I think, actually, the state law tells us that we cannot have an outright ban on pneumatic guns, that we need to allow it on private property, if that private property owner would allow it, even without law enforcement training. Just because the legislator wanted to remove pneumatic guns from fire, the boogeyman of firearms, I'm sorry, for lack of a better term. But yeah, if the Assistant City Attorney could please look at that state law just to guide us in our decision-making, because I would like it to be, I would like it to follow what the state legislature told us what we can and cannot do.
Thank you, Mayor.
And it would be good just to get a gloss on these definitions, just so I'm better prepared to address what a firearm is versus pneumatic gun.
Thank you, Your Honor. We'll do that. And just, that is kind of what triggered this whole process to begin with, in part, due to a change in state laws prohibiting the cities from regulating certain things about firearms, such as transportation or possession of firearms. So they made it very clear through other state laws that triggered the request from the chief some time ago that we've been working on. But definitely, we'll get back to you with regard to those definitions and that act. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Your Honor, so, and if BB guns were to be outlawed, what's the penalty? Does it say?
What would fall under our general penalty provision, which would be a misdemeanor? A 90-day, $500 misdemeanor, up to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corbett?
Just, as I understood the original rationale for the ordinance revision, it had to do with the fact that the state has said, through legislation and court action, you have a limit restriction on the right to bear and carry arms. That does not necessarily mean you have the right to shoot them off in your property.
Correct.
Because you can't keep it on your property. When did it move over into air guns and BB guns? Because other than mothers of the world being worried about it, I'm not, I'm not really sure that we should necessarily be getting into.
And that's what the state legislator wanted to address, the saying, let's pull air guns out of the whole firearm debate, and let's legislate air guns totally separately from the discussion of firearms. And so, in fact, if this 2015 law is still valid, it says we cannot outright ban air guns. We would actually have to allow them on private properties, so long as they're, you know, over 18 years old. So this 2015 law will instruct us on how far we can go with air guns. And it's my opinion, from my read of the state law, is that we actually have to allow air guns, but for limited and very safe conditions.
But that's not inconsistent with what the state had been saying up until that point, as I understood it.
Inconsistent to what? I'm sorry.
Well, if I may--
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, up until then, that we were unaware of, it met the definition, and you could prohibit the discharge of all those--
Right.
--guns under the, so that change, if, is still active today, would clearly tell us what we can and can't do with regard to banning. So that would definitely call for another change to, it would be 17-143-sub-C, where we, and again, it was just copying from the old ordinance to the new ordinance, where we say it's unlawful to discharge an air gun in the city. So obviously, if there's direction from state law as to preemptive activities of what we can prohibit and not prohibit, we obviously want to be consistent with what state law says we can and can't do. Again, that was part of the rationale for drafting this ordinance to begin with. We just never looked at it from an air gun standpoint and just used previous language. That was legal under state law previously to this newly mentioned legislation.
I'd be willing to take a look at that at the time we get to reading, too.
Yeah, I'm ready to approve it on first reading, and I would like to see exactly what Assistant Attorney Gachowski said, what the state directs us to do.
Your Honor?
With the idea that my whole argument is, I do, I would prefer to not ban air guns, but I will follow the state direction on this. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor. Just wanted to first jump in and say, I appreciate that the attorney's office updated, or is proposing this updated ordinance amendment because there is that potential loophole, you know, in quotation marks, but there is a potential loophole in how this ordinance can be read. And I appreciate closing that gap. But as we've done in the past, every time that we update an ordinance, I'd like us to have that 360-degree view of it. We're already taking the time and going through the update on this ordinance. Let's double-check every unintended consequence. Let's make sure that everything's brought up to state law, so that way we don't have to, A, either revisit it very shortly, because we run into that issue. You know, maybe a paintball business would like to come into the city, and the way that they read this and interpret it would be that they couldn't. And/or we're in a conflict with state law, and we just updated it, and so that wouldn't be a good idea either. So I would just ask that the attorney's office, when we get to second reading, I'll support it on first reading, but when we get to second reading, have very spelled-out analysis of the entirety of this ordinance. What are the potential updates that we need to make? What do we need to be aware of? And have that 360-degree analysis, so we don't have to revisit this in a year.
Your Honor?
Mr. Saltis?
I agree with Mayor Protem, but my question is, is why are we voting on it tonight, on the first read? Why don't we just postpone it until we have all the answers?
And that's the benefit of having two readings, and from our experience on council is, this happens quite often. We dig into it, we approve it, we get the ball rolling. The public has an opportunity to give us feedback between the second, staff has an opportunity to maybe correct substantive or just minor tweaks that we want. I don't think there's a need to delay tonight's vote. Approve it on first reading. However, it does not become law until the second reading is approved. And that would be where we delay it. Wait a minute, you know, we're right at the precipice of approving this. Let's get the language right. I think it's okay to approve it tonight, understanding that that's only half of getting it to become a law. I'm okay with it. We've been able to juggle those amendments in stride.
Would that be part of the Councilman Corbett's motion? Does that have to be specified?
With respect, Your Honor, it's not necessary, because the first and second votes are wholly independent of one another. You can approve it tonight, but you still have to give an unqualified yes or whatever when you approve it. So it doesn't make any difference.
City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
As Mr. Gachowski indicated, we've done it both ways. Technically, you're just, on first reading, you're just passing it on terms of title and what the substance of the change is, but nothing goes into effect until council approves it on second reading. And what you're likely to see at the next council meeting is not just a complete report on the whole air gun issue, but to make sure that it complies with state law. So if council passed the motion as made by Councilman Corbett and seconded by Councilman Gettings, it's not tying council's hands in any way. So council could feel free to either change the motion with support's concurrence or go ahead as it's on the floor, and we'll deal with it on second reading.
Any other discussion? All right, this is the vote for the first reading. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Unfinished business, we have none tonight. However, we have several minutes from our past meetings that need to be adopted. Will a member of council please make a motion regarding the special city council minutes of 7:28?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Gettings?
I make a motion to approve the council minutes, excuse me, special council minutes of July 2, 2018.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on adopting the minutes as printed from the special meeting of 7:28? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Motion carried on the last ordinance. I don't know if I said that. Can I have a motion regarding the second set of minutes, the special meeting of 7:9?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I make a motion to approve the special city council meetings of July 9, 2018.
Great. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on adopting as printed the minutes of the special city council meeting of 7:9, 2018? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Can I please have a motion regarding the regular minutes of 7:9:18?
Mr. Mayor?
Patrick.
The trifecta, okay. I make a motion to approve the regular city council minutes of July 9, 2018.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on adopting as printed the minutes of the regular city council meeting of 7:9, 2018? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries, just like the last two. Are there any nominations to city boards and commissions for members of council tonight? Okay, we do not have an executive session tonight. And before we adjourn tonight's meeting, I'd invite any closing comments from members of city council and the staff who are with us. And let's begin with Councilmember Corbett.
Just a couple of quick comments. First of all, the, I thought the conversation, the first meeting, we didn't have a chance to talk since then. I thought went very well. I thought it was productive. I have some hopes that we'll be able to move quickly forward on beginning the process of finding the new city manager. And just to let council know that I did graduate this morning at nine o'clock. I graduated from cardiac rehab over at Beaumont. So now I'm officially free to go find some new bad habits. Other than that, I have nothing further tonight, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Corbett, you can now watch Lions games again.
There it is.
Yeah, exactly. Or Tigers. Exactly. So a few things. First, I'll echo the sentiment from Councilman Corbett. I thought our meeting before the meeting, for those of you who weren't here, we had a meeting in advance of this meeting, lasted about an hour, that was to discuss the search firms that we interviewed for the city manager search. It was a very productive discussion. I think it was an open meeting. Everything will be on tape. If you missed it, you'll be able to watch it on YouTube or the city's cable channel. And it was a great dialogue, and it continues this open process of us vetting out first the search firms, and then the search for what our next city manager, who that's going to be. It's the single most important task that we, as council, will do. And I'm excited by the dialogue and what we heard today, and looking forward to this process continuing. As Councilman Corbett noted, I'm also confident that this could move quickly, you know, as long as we keep moving forward and keep doing the due diligence that we owe to our residents to do. Secondly, I was really enthusiastic about the beautification awards and bike rodeo winners. Those were some really cool bikes, and those yards looked way better than mine, so I'm gonna have to get some tips, see folks still in the audience. It's really awesome to see that program come back, and I hope that we have five times the amount of applications next year. And hopefully, you'll still come out on top. Those are really incredible lawns, I think way better than I'm ever going to be able to come across. But you know, maybe when my kids grow up, and they don't destroy my yard. But it was very cool to see the bikes. Those were better bikes than I ever rode as a kid. And so it was just nice to see the generosity in the community that sponsored those bikes. It was incredible to see that our police department, our city staff, was able to support that bike rodeo. And I also appreciate the efforts of our active adult board in their participation with the summer beautification awards. It was, I think, it was incredibly awesome for me to sit and witness these properties and the many more that submitted, and I appreciate the efforts of the judging committee. Next up, we have a primary coming up. I know our clerk will probably be diving into this in a little bit, so I don't want to take too much time, but I just want to first remind people about it. It's incredibly important. Sometimes the decisions you make in primaries are more important than the decisions you make in a general election. And even though in a general election, you're not bound by party lines, you will scrap and void your ballot if you cross party lines in the primary. So, you know, pick one for this particular primary, make sure you don't void your ballot, and definitely make sure to get out and vote or get an absentee ballot. It's incredibly important. There's some very, very big races on the ballot this year. And I want to make sure that every citizen that can and is able to has a say. Finally, I'm really, really excited about the new Arts and Culture Board event that we just announced. I don't know if anybody's following us on Facebook, but the Arts and Culture Advisory Board announced a new program that we're doing on September 9, which coincidentally is grandparents' day. We're doing an all-generations event that's called a Walk Through Time. It's going to be in Civic Center Park, and it's basically going to be a street artist fair, but with a catch. Artists will be playing, performing, and dancing to different generations, from the 50s all the way through the decades to today. And as you're walking through, there will be some historical artifacts and some just really cool detailed history about those generations. It'd be great for the whole family. You'll be able to enjoy some music. We'll have some food and just a lot of great entertainment. And we would love for the public to start planning on coming out. And again, if you're on Facebook, catch us at Madison Heights Arts and Culture Advisory Board-- Board page. Follow us there, we're announcing a lot of cool programs like this. And we are looking for community members right now for the ability to adopt a decade, particularly for community groups and organizations that would like to adopt or a block of our city that would like to adopt a decade. And then we are looking as well for some historical artifacts, things like eight-track players and old records, anything that could help folks like my kids understand the evolution of music up to today when they just tell Google what they want to hear and it happens. So, it should be a great experience. I'd invite anybody listening to either email me, see me after the meeting, if you'd like to get involved. It's gonna be a really cool event and I'd love for everybody to at minimum come out, but if you can help and support us in any way, we'd really appreciate that. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gettings?
One thing, Mr. Mayor. As I look out in the audience and I see some faces, I know, and I do say this from the heart, the volunteers in this community make this city what it is. The volunteers are what gives us our foundation. Our city staff also does a great job, but the volunteers, I'm hoping to maybe see a goal go back in the budget for the dinner they used to have or banquet, if you will, to honor the volunteers. Since the economy's getting a little better, I'm hoping to see it maybe pass in the goal session. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Sherman? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations to our award winners tonight and also congratulations to the DPS Director and to our newly-named Active Adult Center Advisory Board members who were here tonight for the council meeting and on your selection of the three 2018 Summer Beautification Awards, you picked three outstanding homes, just beautiful. Good job. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Acting City Manager, Mrs. Marsh?
Thank you. The city is about to kick off our first Citizens Academy. It's a citywide program, so if you've ever been interested in what each city department does and get a little kind of background of what goes on at the DPS or the Police Department, I would encourage you to apply. It's gonna be an eight-week-long program. It's gonna start on September the 19th, which is Wednesdays. The program's gonna last about an hour, hour and a half. We're hoping it to be very interactive and fun. So if you're interested, apply because we have to have a minimum of 15 people to make the program a go and it's capped at 25. So, the application is online and you'll be seeing Facebook posts about that this week.
Thank you. City Clerk, Mrs. Prince?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. As previously stated, the August primary election is Tuesday, August 7th. A couple of notes about that. The first one I would like to touch on is what Mayor Protemblis mentioned. This is a partisan primary. That means that when you receive your ballot, you need to choose between the three parties that are on the ballot. This year, for the first time, we have the Libertarian Party on it as well. So you have a choice of Republican, Democrat, or Libertarian. There is also a proposal on the ballot. So when you go to vote your ballot, pick one of those three parties and then also vote your proposal. Precinct 2, formerly the Edison School and now the Keys Grace Academy, the precinct has been moved from that location and is now being located at the Korean First Central United Methodist Church and that is located at 500 West Gardenia. Everybody in this precinct has received a new voter card. If you have any questions about the location, please feel free to call our office. And the last thing I wanted to mention was, if you are interested in the absentee ballot, the last day for our office to mail one out is 2:00 PM on Saturday, August 4th. So if you would like an application, please call us and we'll get one out to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Graffstein?
I just want to say thank you to everyone who participated in the beautification awards, to everyone who went around and looked at the homes and everyone who's taken care of their homes. Those were some beautiful gardens, so thank you for that. Thank you to Chief Haynes and everyone who helped with the bike rodeo, make that a wonderful event and the kids, I'm sure, were quite happy to receive their bikes. I'd also like to encourage everybody to take a look at the Citizens Academy. There's a lot of people who have misinformation about who does what in the city and what powers city council and different members of staff have. So, I think I'm looking forward to this and I am going to attend as many as I can, just to further educate myself on the different departments. So I hope, I think Mrs. Marsh said that was gonna be up on the website in the next few days, so I hope everyone who does have an interest does apply and we can fill this up with maybe about 20 or so people. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was a very appreciative learner in the very first Citizens Academy that we had several years ago. Was it 20 years ago? Anyways, I sat through those classes and they were very interesting to me and very educational so that when I got upset with what I thought was going on in the city, I understood a lot more about how it works and how we all gel together to make the city function and appreciated all the people that put all their time into moving the city. I also wanted to thank the seniors again, myself being one of them, that was the first time I went out to do that. It was very challenging. We had to either, you know, judge people on several things, so it wasn't just the fact that it looked nice. We had to decide whether there was a good use of color, whether it was well-maintained. So the credentials were important and the people that won were very justified and I appreciate anybody who goes and beautifies their lawn, makes the city a beautiful place. Also, in regards to the seniors, they're having a dream cruise party. Now, you know, the normal dream cruise is on Saturday, August 18th, and that's the Woodward Dream Cruise, but we have our own here in Madison Heights and it's going to be held on Monday, August 20th, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. It's only $6 for residents, $8 for non-residents, but it sounds like a wonderful affair and it's a great way to honor and see some of our older vehicles that are owned by some of our citizens. And I thank you, the seniors, for everything they do here. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Soltis?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a large crowd tonight, so I think I'm gonna say a couple of things that have been on my mind. I want to congratulate, excuse me, the chief and the deputies. I think they apprehended two of the armed robbery assailants at the 7-Eleven store, so good job on that. I think I did a ride-along with our undercover officer the other night, a Saturday night, because I wanted to see firsthand. I mean, we get reports and we try to, you know, let the public know. I'm all about transparency, so I did the ride-along and we were out there about three, four hours and quite an eye-opener, you know, in light of being transparent. We have a huge problem in our hotels. We have about 11 of them. And, you know, it's a fight. It's a fight to regain that part of our city because there are criminal elements there that are constantly preying upon the weak and they hold up in these hotels. We're doing a lot about it, you know, we've done a lot in the last three years. We added a officer to Troy SIU. We had an officer to the FBI SIU. We are gonna put another detective in so we can be more local, because that's what we need. When the SIU was disbanded a few years back when, you know, recession, criminal element just preyed upon and festered on these hotels. So I just, I'd like everybody to know that, you know, it is a fight. I mean, and sometimes they win, sometimes they lose. In the last five years, I think in 2013, they had the biggest, a big sweep of human trafficking in southeastern Michigan. Madison Heights was one of the places they had, you know, minor prostitution. And since we've implemented some of these programs and these officers, additional officers, we've made other arrests for the human trafficking here in Madison Heights. There was a big one just last year with Schulte and some of the other southeastern police units. And we made some big arrests for human trafficking. There were four people that were arrested. So, I just want everyone to know and be aware of that because it is there, it's real. It's not gonna go away on its own because you arrest one person and then there's 15 others waiting in line. You know, we've had gang members here from other states. It's a problem. And, you know, I support the police, we all support the police because that's our line of defense. We're also looking at an ordinance now with more teeth for these hotel owners, that if they disobey and they break the law or whoever breaks the law in their facility, they're gonna pay the price. And we're gonna, that's gonna come to the council shortly and we're gonna vote on it. And that's gonna help turn it around. So, again, just in the light of transparency, I think you should know that. If you have any questions, please go to the chief, go to one of us, we'd be happy to tell you a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soltis. You know, we spent a lot of time debating how much money to spend on a can of paint for the gazebo, but, you know, truly, the most sincerest act, the most important act that we do is to preserve the public safety. And I wanna, not congratulate, but thank council for, you know, the last two, three years, that the first thing we look at, at our new budget, is what can we do to increase public safety in our city? And so, Mr. Soltis has been a leader, speaking up about additional undercover work. I mean, when you hear stories of, you know, international gangs running through your city, hotels, or human traffickers using our hotels, I mean, that terrifies you as a citizen. And so it's very important, Mr. Soltis, that you continue to remind the public that, you know, these are the most important issues as a city, as a community, that we need to consider and, you know, rely on our experience and the opinions of our residents on how to tackle this. And, you know, of course, I want to thank Police Chief Cory Haynes, who's been with us at the creative level, coming up with new ideas, building relationships with the FBI, for example. You know, this issue of public safety is the most important job we do. Related to public safety, and maybe number two on the complaint list the city receives is code enforcement. Code enforcement for building code. Are our buildings, homes, and businesses in a safe condition for members of the public to use? You know, we look at, Mr. Bliss has used a term, sorry to put words in your mouth if I fail, but repeat offenders. And so, city council has chewed on this idea of how do we respond to our residents' demand for cleaning up the city? We do not want to become a blighted community. You know, we pride ourselves on funding our Department of Public Services for, you know, sweeping the roads. I mean, that's a small thing, a very important job, but projects like that show that we really care about the appearance, but it's really about public safety. And so this year, not me, because I don't have any authority to create law or policies, but city council adopted a goal to fund new code enforcement officers. And with that, with council's funding of additional code enforcement officer time, was the stick that told staff, come up with some new code enforcement policies. And so staff at the department head level, and who knows at what level, but I'm sorry, in the code enforcement division, they've come up with some new policies to approach homeowners with code enforcement. I grew up in the south end of the city, I live in the south end of the city, so I see it every day. Some of my neighbors are really struggling financially. Other of my neighbors are just completely absent landlords who maybe have never taken care of their house. And these are some of the areas that the city really wants to dig into and understand. First of all, why are people struggling to keep their properties safe? And two, we're gonna be on you now. You're not gonna get 20 warnings to fix your dangerous house. We are going to demand that you fix your house now. And so of course, there's gonna be some growing pains with these new policies. I've received calls from people asking me to personally intervene into the police or the code enforcement investigation. Guys, I cannot give you any favors and stop an investigation. If you get a ticket, address it on your own and then I'll offer some comments personally afterward. But what I would like and what would make sense is if we could be as open as possible and if we do craft new policies, I think that should be front and center on our city website. Maybe we discuss it at public meetings, saying, here are the new ideas, here are the new ways that our code enforcement officers are enforcing new policies. It's not the mayor going around in a pickup truck issuing tickets. It's not me writing laws, it's not council, you know, out there issuing tickets. So I would like to get, you know, better reporting from the staff level, the council, on what the new policies are so that we can publish that to the public. And, you know, this is a step in the right direction. Again, it's about public safety. It's about also maintaining our property values and the integrity of our neighborhoods, one property at a time. And people are not gonna like receiving tickets, but there's always an appeal process if you think you're mistreated or unfairly treated. I want to thank everyone who showed up tonight. It's especially encouraging to see so many elected officials from the school board and the superintendent in the presence of our meeting tonight. Unlike other cities where the city government controls school decisions, the city does not control any of the school decisions. The school is a separate form of government. So, it's with the utmost respect of that separation of government that I tip my cap to you, to encourage you to continue what you're doing. You have a difficult job to do and our selected officials on the city don't know how to do your job, excepting one member. So it's really encouraging to see you, to have FaceTime with you. You know, these meetings are publicly broadcast live and we repeat these videos, so this is a great opportunity to introduce yourselves and your ideas to our regular audience. And although I cannot instruct you on how to do your job, I always invite these conversations from you. Mr. Speck, he's commented the last two meetings of how the line of communication has been very fluid between us and I appreciate taking the time for your separate form of government to inform us on important matters because we live in the same city. We want the same general outcome. We want more people to come to the city. We want residents to stay in the city. We want businesses to locate in the city. So there's overlapping policy concerns, but thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you for speaking your mind. Also, thank you to the members of the public who spoke up on a variety of issues, whether it was development of Monroe or religious rights. But I also want to repeat what Mr. Gettings said of how special our city is, first of all, that we allow public comment like this and I don't sit here gabbling you and interrupting you, but also how people feel so easy to engage our government. And you have the members of our Active Adult Advisory Committee, many of you who have worked for decades, volunteered for decades for our city, a new chairman who's just hitting home run after home run and cracking skulls to get some action on the board. But, Mr. Gettings, you're right. Really what makes Madison Heights special is we have so many people in our city, including members of the school board, including members of the public who showed up tonight, who have a lot of ideas and who are not afraid to express those ideas, but they're not just complainers. They don't just hide behind a Facebook screen. You actually come to public meetings, you talk to reporters, you inform us and staff, and that's a very important part of my job as mayor and I'm sure council members appreciate that. I'm sure the school board, through thick and thin, you do appreciate public comment. I'm sure you learn a lot about yourself and how to perform your job. But thank you for everyone who came tonight. Thank you for being very professional and clear and succinct with your ideas. And of course, we will repeat this twice a month in perpetuity. And I don't believe there's any other business for us tonight. And so with that, thank you. You're always welcome. Back to Madison Heights and the meeting is adjourned.